Joanne Adams.
Here.
Claire Bhatt.
Here.
Patrice McCrery.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Allison Slone.
Here.
All right, thank you. We're all here. So our first item is approval of waiver of training requirements for 701 K R eight twenty. So we have K D E Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster.
Hi, good afternoon. I also have with me David Cook, who's one of the directors in my office. And we are kind of tag teaming this just for information. So the charter school work falls directly under me. But when a school district sends in a waiver regarding anything to K D E, those come to my office and into David. So we're both here, just so you know on that. So before you, basically, we are bringing a waiver to take action on. And currently, we have sixteen school districts, and they are all listed in the staff note, that have submitted waivers to the Kentucky Board of Education in regarding the charter school training that right now currently is every year, and they are requesting that be waived. So that's kind of the first part of this. The second part of this is that interim commissioner is also recommending to K B E that we do a waiver for all the other school districts across the state, and that you all would approve that as well as today. And if those districts wanted to request that waiver, then they would send in a letter to the commissioner, and then that would be approved. And you can also see kind of in the staff note some of the reasons that these sixteen districts have requested the waiver, and the main reason being that a lot of districts in the state feel like they're never going to receive a charter school application. And so why would the burden of going through those twelve hours of charter school training be placed on them? So that's kind of the high-level overview of this. David, anything you want to add?
No, I'd just point out that at the previous board meeting, eight of these sixteen came before the previous board and were denied. So those eight plus eight more came in between then and now. So the original eight that were denied resubmitted their waiver application, and eight additional ones.
And I guess I should also say, if, if, if this is passed, part of this, and we are going to be making changes, I'm back up here in a few minutes with the charter, one of the charter school regulations. But if one of these districts did receive a charter school application, then they would have to make arrangements to receive the authorizer training within ten days of receiving that application.
And I would just say, if you're asking, well, what's the difference? We have relatively the same K D E staff here that were here in December, and their recommendation from, of course, it was a different commissioner. And I read the rationale at the December meeting to deny them, and that rationale was justified. It is supported. These are policy decisions. And I simply have a different way of looking at it. The recommendation that was approved at the December board meeting, there's nothing wrong with that. That was a policy determination by that commissioner. I believe our policy determination should be that we should grant this relief. There's a very low likelihood that the majority of these districts will get charter school applications anytime soon because of their own demographics of their district, as well as still not having a charter funding mechanism. If they do get a charter application, we have already seen in practice that it is feasible for the Kentucky School Board Association or another provider, but it would probably be them to go to that district and deliver very good training to that board within seventy-two hours, which is exactly what occurred in Newport when they received a charter school application. So the other thing I would point out is KSBA has done a really good job of integrating charter school training into other training that is required for school board members. So even though districts will be getting this waiver, if this is approved today, board members will still be receiving some charter training all throughout the year because it is embedded now within finance training, within governance training, with all the other trainings that school boards go through. It may not be the exact amount they would need if they got an application, but they will still be getting it, some of it at least.
So I just have a procedural question, and that is that Commissioner Brown's conditional recommendation is conditional in that it is until June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, and that they would have to have the training if they receive an application. And then, secondly, are these two different recommendations that need approval, or can these be bundled into one approval?
I think it's all together.
Okay, all right. And then my comment would be, what I appreciate about the recommendation is that I believe that adults learn in a timely way when it's, when there's something to consider. So the notion that we would give some kind of prophylactic training and well in advance of the actual event taking place doesn't seem to me as effective as knowing that we, the School Boards Association, and I've spoken with them too, that they can provide that on a just-in-time basis, seems to be a good rationale, in my opinion, for approving the recommendation.
I'd like to make a comment. On this same note, kind of as a comparison, I spent nine years on our school's site-based decision-making council, and we had to go through principal selection training once. If I had done that at the beginning of my nine years on that committee, I would not have had a clue what I was doing in hiring a principal. So it makes more sense to me to do that in a timely manner, as you said.
Uh-huh, good analogy.
Right, any other questions? All right, well, we do need to vote, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, yes, thank you, to approve the application of waiver of administrative regulations from the Mayfield and Somerset Independent School Districts, as well as Bell, Carroll, Christian, Davies, Graves, Harland, Henry, Hopkins, Knott, Leslie, Owsley, Pulaski, Simpson, and Trimble County School Districts, and conditionally approve any future waivers of seven oh one K R A eight twenty, section three four, requested by letter to the interim commissioner from a superintendent in one of the hundred and fifty-six school districts not named. So we have a motion from Claire, second from Patrice. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have approval of the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty-First Century Act. That's the Perkins Five State Plan. And we have K D E Associate Commissioner David Horseman, K D E Policy Advisor Leslie Slaughter, and K D E Branch Manager Carla Tipton. Or maybe we don't have who? We're missing...
That's me.
We didn't want to overpower you. Thank you for this opportunity. We just want to give you an overview and a history of Perkins Five to give you an idea of where we are and where it came from. And the Perkins law hasn't even been reauthorized since two thousand and six, and I think Carla was there at that time. And so we've been operating under that law for the past thirteen years. And it was named after Carl D. Perkins, representative from Eastern Kentucky. And the goal was to increase the quality of technical education in order to increase and promote the local economies. The intent of the new Perkins Law is to, and I think it's all about efficiency, talking about vertically aligning programs between secondary and post-secondary, so we're not repeating courses over and paying for them later on. Collaboration, as we heard the governor, Lieutenant Governor talk today about tearing down silos. This plan is written with a lot of stakeholders from business community and across all the state agencies and education agencies. For the first time, there's, it calls for an extensive comprehensive local needs assessment process which gathers labor market data and that sort of thing to drive the decision-making for the plans. And again, as, and you've heard so much about teacher shortages and teacher pipelines, part of that is funding that and teacher training, expanding the reach and scope of guidance. We've heard that mentioned today, how young people need to see and hear about it at an earlier age. And this allows funding to go back down to as early as fifth grade for guidance and counseling, and to promote innovative processes, which has been discussed as well today. Funding for the act, our baseline is about eighteen point two million. The eligible recipients are secondary and post-secondary institutions, as well as the area technology centers, who are also funded as part of this. And each has to offer at least one program of study. And the funds, as you can see, are dispersed along those lines in the percentages. Development of the plan started last fall, and part of that, part of the law afforded thirty-day public comment window that we had. And we only had one or two comments from that, and we pushed it out through every available media that we could to all of our stakeholders. And additionally, we had three public forums across the state. And I think we had maybe three to attend those public forums, and those were publicized as well. So, so following the review and approval by the Kentucky Board of Education, the governor's office will have access to the plan for a thirty-day time to review that plan as well. And then we'll be submitting the plan to the U.S. Ed following that period. When you look at the development of the plan, I won't name them all off, but there's a lot of folks represented there. I think we had somewhere in the seventies at our first steering committee meeting with representatives from homeless to universities. Now, the key elements of the new Perkins Plan, when we look at accountability, the core indicators for both secondary and post-secondary. Secondary, the CTE concentrator status, for those of you that have been in education, was three courses in a CTE program of study, and now that is two to qualify. And in post-secondary, a concentrator is one who's earned twelve credits in a CTE program or program of study, or completes that program if it's less than twelve hours credit. The levels for these will be developed for four years within the state plan, and we're required to make meaningful progress toward that, those goals. And if the indicators aren't met for two consecutive years, then funds could be withheld. The state has four mandated performance indicators. You can see grad, graduation rate, academic achievement in reading, math, and science, post-program placement, and CTE concentrators in a non-traditional field. That would be your welding or carpenter, that, a female student that might enter those areas. States have to choose at least one of the following. Post-secondary credential is the one that we chose based on the three that we had there. Performance indicators for post-secondary, we're talking about the percentage of CTE concentrators during the second quarter after the program is completed, that they either remain enrolled in that post-secondary education and continue, or they could be in advanced training, military service, or actually placed or retained in employment. The percentage of CTE concentrators who have a recognized post-secondary credential enter within one year of the program completion. And these CTE concentrators in career and technical education and programs, again, as in secondary, lead to those non-traditional areas. What is a Perkins Program of Study? And when we get into vocabulary, a lot of you are educators and understand that we almost need an education area to understand a lot of the things that we do and say. And Program of Study has changed a little bit, and sometimes they're used interchangeably with career pathways. But when we look at a Program of Study in Perkins Law, where it incorporates challenging academic standards, and it addresses the technical knowledge as well, including those essential or employability skills that we hear so much about from our business and industry partners. It aligns with the needs of the industry, of the state, region, or local area, progresses in specificity, and has multiple entry and exit points. And when we're talking about career pathways, those are the on and off ramps where people can get that first credential. We were, as Dr. Thompson was talking today about post-secondary or college. Well, it doesn't have to necessarily, and doesn't usually happen, at the same time for everybody. So having a very efficient Program of Study allows a student to, if it's necessary to go to work, they have something for that at that point, or if it, but it still aligns with that post-secondary experience. They can get back on the ramp and travel down that Program of Study to completion wherever it works for them. And then that, all of this is to culminate with the attainment of some post-secondary recognized credential. There is a big, there was a, this was one of the bigger things, I think, that we saw in the law, was the focus on equity in special populations. And you can see there, you know, the folks that were brought into the planning this time with foster care, homeless, children of active-duty parents. So it's a, it's a much broader-based law than it was before. I spoke a little bit about the comprehensive local needs assessment. This is an integral part of the process where local entities, and we've set that out, as the smallest entity could be a county, where the post-secondary and businesses at that level. We do have some that are working in regions, which is what we recommend because your labor market data, a lot of that is the same for a two or three-county area. And you have to engage these partners in the process, talk about the gap analysis for these special populations that we've talked about today, a description of how the programs are offered in terms of size, scope, and quality, alignment to in-demand sectors identified by the K WIB that the Lieutenant Governor was talking about, and meet those local education and economic needs. An evaluation of the process toward implementation of the programs of study, and a plan to improve the recruitment, retention, and training of CTE teachers, and the strategies for equitable access for all students. And those two bottom ones are big. When we pull people from industry to teach that are making from sixty to eighty, we could not find a teacher to teach, I think Jessamyn County was one that opened a diesel program. And, you know, we had a young student in Shelby County. We had two young students that had graduated and wanted to come back and teach, but they were both making eighty-five thousand. So those are the, the problems that we have in recruitment, which are not exactly the same as you would see on the other side of the House. And equitable access for all students is another thing that we've talked about as well with the CTE Task Force with the General Assembly members this year. So I told you that we had little or no comment in the public comment session in our, and so I come to you today with some recommendations that we took the LSAC based on some feedback we got when we started our training. And that had to do with the definitions for the quality for Programs of Study at secondary and post-secondary levels. And we have that new definition on pages thirty-five and sixty-nine. But to give you an idea of why we felt the need to do that, when Carla started the training that day and her associates, there were folks in the room that said, "We will not qualify because of this." When we laid out the, the quality definition, we used state-level data, and we would be able to serve, everyone, everyone would still get their money, and it would, you know, we would have a, we were in a good place for that. But when, when we got that feedback from one person, we went back, and I asked Carla and her staff to look at the numbers for each district and each user, and we found that there were going to be, between a third and a half of the, of the users would not meet it because there's a wide disparity between schools and districts and their performance levels. And our idea is to improve performance, not to take people's money away that need, need that to make improvements. So we went back to, and we looked, then we took about eight to ten joining states and looked at some of their definitions and tied it to some definitions that we had worked on in our office over the past years of how to define what a quality CTE program is. And the result of that is on page thirty-five. I'd be glad to run through it with you if you'd like. But, so, we had the Local Superintendent's Advisory Committee last week, and we presented to them, and they passed a motion to recommend this change to the committee. So would you like me to run through those, or if you're good?
I think they're explanatory.
I don't think you need to.
Okay, so the timeline now, we're, April, we started with the transition plan from, we were able to, and the law was actually passed in eighteen, and we were allowed to have one-year transition plan. We did that and submitted that last April, and it was approved. And then we are under that transition plan between Perkins Four and Perkins Five. February, we're here at the meeting to get your approval for this plan. And we've already had, as I said, open comment. We're taking it based on your approval. If you approve, we're going to take that to the governor's office and have them review it. And then if there are any changes in that, and we will also have another window, right, Leslie?
Yes.
Another public comment window, so that maybe the folks will take a closer look at it this time. But we can get, still get all that done and have it off to the U.S. D O E in April, and for implementation beginning in July two thousand and twenty. And we have had a dress rehearsal on the, the CLNA that, the local, Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment during this transition period, so people are learning, in that process of learning how to use labor market data to derive their decisions about spend, investing their Perkins dollars moving forward. So with that, if you have any questions, I've got the experts here to...
All right.
I'm concerned at the low amount of turnout and, and response to this. This is purely supposition, but why do you think that turnout was so small? And after you met with them and they discovered there were discrepancies in what they had in order to apply, do you think it will result in more responses this next round? So that's a two-part question, sorry.
Well, my, my, my perspective is that Perkins, I worked with Perkins at school level from ninety-four on, teacher, principal, two or three different places. And there wasn't a lot of change over the years. And I think that Perkins is Perkins, and all the superintendents said, "Well, it's a lot of work to spend a little money." You know, and that's kind of the way it is. And there, it is fairly restrictive because it is to focus on career and technical education. So I think it was kind of blasé, there's nothing, you know, we're still going to get our money, there'll be different things we'll have, hoops we'll jump through. But then when we rubber-met the road and we started, Carla started talking about implementation, whoa. So I don't know that we'll get more feedback about it. I know that we opened it back up to the post-secondary, we changed that definition as well because, you know, they're our partners and they're, they know their data better than we do. We said, "You better take a look," and they took a look, and they aligned kind of with our, ours. Any other?
Also, between Perkins Three and Perkins Four, there wasn't a lot of change in the plan. So, like David said, Perkins is Perkins, and Perkins has been Perkins since nineteen ninety-eight. And nobody thought, and then Perkins Five came along, and no matter how much you tell somebody, "It's changing," you know, there's big changes here, and we've done a lot of trainings and that kind of thing, it's still Perkins until we started doing the training.
All right, Lou?
And I had just a similar, on the heels of that, what kind of additional training and support do you imagine that schools and districts will need come summer? I know you have an annual conference every July.
Yes, right now, we're actually traveling the state for the next two months. And everybody in the state will have to have at least one person trained on how to do their local application. Before that, we did, in the fall, we did about twelve different trainings on the local needs assessment. And then at summer conference, we are doing sessions all around the implementation and, and how all of that works.
Okay.
So that was part of Carla's strategy when we were doing the plan, get folks trained on using the comprehensive needs assessment as part of the transition plan. So now, it's really been a struggle because districts, folks, aren't generally used to look into labor market data to start talking about spending their money, and not necessarily partner with a post-secondary partner, and having a business, your business folks at the table with you saying, "What are your needs? What are your needs?" And then they'll write their plans based on that collaborative needs assessment.
Any other questions? Seems like you all did such a thorough job of gathering stakeholders. I know I talked to someone that worked on this plan with you as I was looking through it, and she felt so valued in that her voice was really heard and felt really committed to the process. And it's been a whole year, right?
Yes.
I mean, so, I mean, I think that's pretty commendable that you were able to bring that many people together to create this plan.
That's great to hear. Yes, and it really is because we really tried very hard to make sure that all the stakeholder groups were covered and well-represented. And I have to say, from the first, we've had three stakeholder meetings where we brought everybody together. The first one and the third one were extremely well-attended. The, the second one, not as much, but we did have enough buy-in for people to say, you know, "Go back and look at this and change some things," and, and that's what we did. And that's how the plan was developed.
And we had business members at the table, or, well, in the audience because we had a room full that day on the last one. And we had a lot of comments from the audience. And maybe that's why that, you know, those stakeholders kind of got their, felt like they, you know, that they got their say there. But again, those folks were talking about implementation of making sure, one that I recall was some of the labor folks were making sure that we were addressing apprenticeships in here, and how that, they want to make sure that they're heard, but yet a school is seeing that, but they're not seeing that how I'm going to be looked at is going to change a little bit from what it has been in the past. And that's where the, the accountability piece, we were told all year long by the feds, "Let's be bold, let's drive it forward." And I don't, I got so tired of hearing "bold," and they, I don't, we didn't think we were bold, but we were a little too bold, I think, on our definition for quality. And that's, but we'll step back and, and do it this way, and, and I think we've got a good plan to move forward with.
Chair Blood, where's that?
Okay.
That's okay. I just wanted to say that I commend you, even though your feedback wasn't a lot. Apparently, it, it shows that one voice can make a difference. You listened to one person, and I appreciate that as an individual. You could have easily looked over that one concern, and you would not have found the issues that you did. So I commend you on, on listening to that person. I really appreciate that.
I would just like to note as well, we are asking you to take action today, but we would like to bring the plan back to you one final time at the April meeting before we submit to the United States Department of Ed, just to give you a review of what the comments from the governor's office looked like, and then any additional public comments that were received in the new window.
But you would still need a motion to approve this plan to ensure federal funding for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one.
We are asking for that today, yes.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion from...
So, we have a motion from Lou to approve the Perkins V State Plan. Do I have a second? Okay. Joanne? And all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your work on that.
All right. Next, we have just a couple of review items for our committee. So, first, we're going to look at Amendment of 701 KAR, KAR 820, Evaluation of Charter School Authorizers. It's the first reading, and we have Kelly Foster, Associate Commissioner, back at the table.
Hello again. This is part two to kind of what we talked about earlier. So, this is the actual regulation, as you mentioned, 701 KAR 8:020, that has the charter school training in the regulation. And so, basically, what we are doing is we are now, for the first read, amending this regulation. It will, it will go to LSAC, I believe, on January, oh, excuse me, it's already been to LSAC one time for comment, and they are very much in support of this. And then it will go back to LSAC again before we bring it back to you before the second reading. So, I will just kind of walk you through, and if you want to see actually in the regulation, if you go to page 10, I'll give you a second to get there, but if you go to page 10, you can see where it has been, the language that says the authorized, or it's designated for charter authorizing shall participate in annual in-service training as follows. That language has been removed. And so, basically, what we are doing in here is updating the language in the reg to match the waiver that you all previously passed, and will be taken to the full board for approval.
And what, what does LSAC stand for?
That's the Local Superintendent Advisory Council. I apologize. And so, everything that comes to you all typically will go in front of the local school board, or, excuse me, local superintendent committee. There are several of those. There's also a local school board, there is a parent group. So, we get a lot of feedback from those groups before we actually bring those items to committees, to the board, in case that needs to be incorporated or anything needs to be changed. And then I think it also is good leverage to know that your local superintendents support something that we're bringing to you all, or if they had something that they thought we needed to revisit and look at. So, that always happens before it comes to the board.
Okay. Any questions?
And to complete the regulatory process, what do we do besides this action?
So, this is just the first reading. You don't have to take any action. It will come back to you all in April for a second reading and the final vote. And of course, if I were to receive any other feedback from any other groups between now and then, I would share that with you all when I come back in April.
And then after April, waivers would no longer be necessary?
Well, the regulatory process, then it has to go out for public comment for 60 days. But now, there are also some things going on over in the legislature right now around laws that I think this is showing up over there as well, but the interim commissioner, Brown, really wanted to make sure that we went ahead and did this for the relief to the districts. I know that KSBA's annual conference is coming up in February, and we wanted to try to get some relief to local school boards before that conference. That way, they would be able to attend sessions that they really needed training on, or really wanted to attend, rather than trying to ensure that they receive their charter school training, if they didn't think they were ever going to, you know, get it, receive an application.
Other than LSAC, you said there might be other, other groups that it would be presented to for their consideration.
So, when it goes out to public comment through the regulatory process, when it goes out to public comment, the agency receives all those comments, and we have to then bring those comments back to you all as a board. And sometimes we might adjust something based on a comment, and if we don't adjust it based on a comment, we have to provide a rationale of why we didn't make that, make that change. So, it's a long process, but it's thorough, and it, you know, it's really important.
Yes, Claire. During your discussion with the superintendents, did you have any who were opposed to making this change, or?
No.
And what was their rationale? Okay.
None at all, no. And do you, legal team back there, do you want to say anything on that? Am I butchering the regulatory process too much? Okay?
I think you're providing all the information that's needed.
No.
But LSAC is a committee that, that's by statute, everything goes to LSAC before it comes to you all.
All right. Anything else? All right, so we'll see you back here with that.
Thank you. I'll see you in April. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We have another item for review. It's 780 KAR 1:011, repeal of 780 KAR 1:010, Kentucky State Plan for Career and Technical Education. This is the first reading, and we have KDE Associate Commissioner David Horseman, and KDE Division Director Tom Thompson, and KDE Policy Advisor Leslie Slaughter.
We have a lot of reinforcement for a small item, I think you'll find.
That's all right.
There are two issues with this. One is the 780 KAR, which reference, that, that regulation is for Kentucky Tech. Perkins is for all CTE, not just Kentucky Tech, and that's why Tom's here. He's, he's our director over all of the area technology centers. The other problem with this regulation is that, I told you, this, the Perkins V instead of the Kentucky, or the big, long name we have for Perkins V, back in 2008, it was that last time that it was done, it was incorporated into the reg with, as reference, I said it wrong, Leslie.
Incorporated by reference.
Incorporated by reference, yes. And so, that's no longer in alignment, and so, we don't, you know, we just don't need this regulation any longer. So, that's, I think that's about it.
Any questions?
If you're regulations, the better.
Right. So, this is the first, the first reading?
It is.
And we'll see you back in April also.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. That's all of our agenda for this committee meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
All right. Patrice has made the motion in a second.
I'll second.
Claire? And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So, I know David had said at least by three, I don't know where they are.
You're the winner.
Woo-hoo!
They're close behind.
Okay, good.
You definitely are. Okay, good.
Man, I'm on a roll. That's two firsts for me this week.
So, if you'll need to take a quick break, this would be a good time.